Welcome back to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of September 8th, 2015. The next item on our agenda is the study session, and that is going to be about the Utilities Master Plan this evening, so I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Mayor Carl. Tonight, our presentation is on the integrated water planning for the city, and of course, living in the arid desert climate that we are in, there's, in many respects, nothing more important than our water planning. Unfortunately, as you are well aware, the City of Peoria has done an excellent job over the years in planning for our water resources, for the current population we have, and probably, more importantly, for build-out of the city. What we're about to present now is the integration of the water, wastewater, planning, as well as the mitigation efforts for drought. And so, this is the first time that the city has brought all of these efforts together in one plan, in one document, and I think it's an excellent effort that the Utilities folks have put together. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works and Utilities Director, Bill Mattingly.
Thank you, Carl, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to be here before you this evening to talk about our master plan and a few other related topics. But before I get into this, I'd like to introduce the folks who are seated to my right. Dana Tromke is with Corolo Engineering, and Corolo has done a number of projects for the City of Peoria over the years, including a number of prior master plans for the City of Peoria, so they have a lot of history with us. And then, of course, Mike Weber, our Deputy Utilities Director, is here. So I'm going to go ahead and get started here, and then I'll turn it over to Dana and to Mike to carry on with the presentation. So we're going to be discussing three related topics. As Carl alluded to, the Utilities Master Plan, but we're also going to talk about our water portfolio, our water resources, so that'll be an important thing that we're going to be able to brief you on tonight as well. Additionally, we're going to talk about the things that the City of Peoria has done to guard itself against drought and our drought mitigation efforts. So what is the Utilities Master Plan? It's a key planning document. It's what we use to plan for the orderly expansion of our water and wastewater and reclaimed water utilities over time. We update this plan on a five-year cycle, and it helps us to, as a guide, to coordinate for new development. It also is key to shaping our capital improvement program. What the master plan is not, it is not a rate analysis, so that's not what we're doing here with this. This, by the way, this large document here is the entire master plan you have in front of you, the executive summary, which is a little more user-friendly. The presentation we're going to be doing tonight will not follow the order of the executive summary, but that is there as a reference. The Utilities Master Plan directly supports the general plan. In fact, if you know that the general plan has a number of different sub-plans in it, but it is referenced in the general plan. And there is a water resource element in the general plan as well. All the land use and associated water needs that are driven by the general plan are what are the basis for this infrastructure master plan. I've been involved with master planning with the City of Peoria for a lot of years, 20 years. I've been through a number of these five-year cycles on this, and what we have done traditionally is we would do a water master plan one year, wastewater master plan the next year, the resource plan the next year, and then a reclaim plan. So we did them on an ongoing rotational basis to keep them all up to date. This time, in this cycle, we've done, for the first time, brought all of these together into a single plan, and it makes sense. And you look at the graphic that we have there, the water supply leads into the wastewater treatment. The wastewater treatment goes right into reclaimed water and reused water. All of that is water supply, and it's a continuous cycle, so it makes sense to have an integrated master plan, and that's what we have before you this time. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dana to let her talk about the master plan itself, then Mike will talk about the other two areas.
Thank you, Bill. As Bill mentioned, one of the elements in the City of Peoria's general plan is the water resource element, and that calls for the intertwining of the water resource planning and development planning, and that that just makes sense for Peoria. And so that's where we started with this assumption, is that we would be planning for growth, and we were intertwining the resource planning and development planning. But how much growth? That's always the question. Well, first, we started with population projections from Maricopa Association of Governments, and you'll note on the chart that over the next 30-year planning period, the population in Peoria is expected to double. That number will continue through build-out and could reach 450,000 to 500,000 at some point, but over the next 30 years, it will more than double. And so how do we plan for the water delivery and the wastewater collection for those, and what type of services are we going to need for that population? Well, those service needs are going to be based on when and where development occurs. We used the land use plan from the general plan, and we took specific area plans, for example, Old Town Redevelopment, P-83, Vistancia, Commercial Core, those kind of things, and pulled those all together, and also pulled in the parks and open space planning for the city to use that as the planning assumptions for the rest of these plans. We layered them all together to develop some growth projections. Now, what you see here is a map of the existing development. The green area are the areas that by your land use plan are designated as parks and open space, and the gray areas are lands that are already developed. And so, by using this as the base, we used, and the population projections on MAG, we layered those, and the coming growth is based on attractiveness factors of proximity to major roadways, or to parks, or to schools, or commercial cores, and that kind of thing. And so, we developed a set of growth projections. You'll note that we're getting some infill now in the yellow areas, it's 2020, and the growth is projected to continue through 30, a deeper yellow, through 2040 and build-out. And it's kind of a logical growth projection of where it makes sense for development to occur over the planning period. And that's how we used as an establishment, or that's what we used as a baseline to establish what sort of infrastructure plans are going to be needed to serve this. So we'll launch into the infrastructure plans, and starting with the Water Infrastructure Plan. Now, the Water Infrastructure Plan lays out a flexible plan to respond to development and includes water treatment facilities, wells for potable supplies, storage for fire and emergencies, and distributions to home and commercial businesses. The key objectives of the Water Infrastructure Plan are to provide service for this future development and to develop redundant supplies. From the Water Infrastructure Plan, many capital improvement projects were identified and recommended. Those include some treatment facilities, such as expanding your Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Facility, and I believe you'll hear more about that later this evening, developing new wells for groundwater, and also to recover some of the stored water that Peoria does. Additionally, you'll need to build more reservoirs and booster stations throughout the developing areas to meet peak demand and serve for fire flow conditions. And it'll include major transmission mains, such as the Lone Mountain 36-inch water line, which is the latest large water transmission main planned. From that, we went into the Wastewater Infrastructure Master Plan, and again, some of the key objectives for the wastewater infrastructure plan is to provide service for this future development and to develop systems for the safe collection, conveyance, and treatment of wastewater so that it can become a beneficial reuse of this wastewater. Likewise, there's some capital improvement projects that were identified from this, including expanding your existing treatment facilities as growth demands and as need for service demands, and that would include an expansion of both your Jomax and your Beardsley facility, as well as extending wastewater collection systems up to those newer areas to safely convey that wastewater back to these facilities. Capital Improvement Plan also planned for new treatment facilities that are not already operating, and that would include the Paddleford Water Reclamation Facility, perhaps when saddleback heights in that area of the community has developed, and then the Aguafria, which would be north of the 303, north of the CAP canal, to serve that area as well. And then the plan also needed to include new wastewater collection systems for those areas to get, to collect flows to those new treatment facilities, as well as new reclaimed water systems from them. Which that then leads into the reuse facilities. Couple of the key objectives of the reclaimed water infrastructure plan is to reuse every drop of water. And by reuse every drop of water, I mean it can be used in two different ways. You can deliver it directly in, let's say, a purple pipe system, where it's delivered directly to a golf course like Vistancia for irrigation, or you can recharge the reclaimed water, and it aids in your water resource planning, which Mike will get into a little bit more. By doing that, you help to develop a reliable and sustainable water supply. Likewise, the reclaimed water infrastructure plan has some capital improvement projects identified, and to address those two issues I just talked about, one would be maximizing recharge opportunities. That includes some additional recharge wells at the Jomax facility, expanding recharge basins at Beardsley when that facility is expanded, and adding recharge wells to the Butler facility as well. Recharging the stored water underground is a beneficial reuse because it can be recovered later when you need it. And the other component is, as we talked about, the purple pipe, or the direct delivery of reclaimed use for immediate irrigation use, and that would be expanding the Butler reclaimed water facility, expanding the Jomax reclaimed water distribution facility, and then possibly adding reclaim or recovery wells so that you could just recover that water, that stored water, and direct delivery without having to construct, say, miles and miles of purple pipe. Now, the reason that storing that recharge and reclaimed water is also considered a beneficial use and not just a disposal method is because the reclaimed water that you store underground actually provides and helps with the Peoria's drought protection. Now, I'm the engineer, so I had to have a chart here at some point, and this chart shows the amount of water that every time, every drop of water that Peoria stores becomes accrued as a long-term storage credit, and that's administered through the Arizona Department of Water Resources. And so this is a chart showing how much water Peoria has accrued to date, and then is anticipated to continue storing over time. And by the time you get to your 2040 or so, you won't have excess water to store, you will be directly reusing and recovering it then. But what's really important is the little black dotted line. That shows what would happen to your storage account if there was a long-term, an extended drought that lasted, say, six years, and it affected your surface water supplies by 50 percent. You can then draw from these stored long-term storage credits and help supplement your water resource portfolio at the time. So every drop of water that is recharged now, you're saving for later as well. To get a little more into the water resources, I'd like Mike to do that.
All right, Dana, thank you very much. Yeah, as Bill's alluded to, part of this presentation this evening is on water resources. Dana's told you a little bit about how those water resources could be used in new facilities, how additional water resources could be developed by way of the effluent coming from future wastewater treatment plants or water reclamation facilities. So it's my intent to tell you a little bit more about what those resources actually are, and what comprises our portfolio, and what the overall key objectives are. Our key objective for our Water Resources Planning Effort is simply to maintain an adequate supply of water for our future, and as well as current needs. Our portfolio is very diverse, as you can see. It's comprised of components of surface water as well as groundwater elements. Central Arizona Project Water is one of the key elements of our portfolio, as is the other surface water component, the Salt River Project. We also recover some of that stored water by way of our recovery wells, and we also have the rights and abilities to draw groundwater itself, and we do utilize reclaimed water for direct delivery for non-potable uses at this time. The other element that I'll get to as we get further into this, of course, is the drought mitigation, and you'll see how these portfolio elements, especially the stored water, relate to our drought mitigation and drought contingency planning. So, you can see that our current usage is comprised of major elements from the water portfolio. Primarily, you can see that the bulk of our current use is provided through the Central Arizona Project allocation, as well as the other surface water component, the Salt River Project. Those two make up the vast majority of this pie, that is our current demand. Recovered water is another key element, and finally, the reclaimed water is provided for as a small component. Now, as we look toward the future, you can see that there's been some drastic changes. You can see that Central Arizona Project Water becomes more important as we go forward in time and develop and start to fill in some of those areas that you saw on Dana's slides as they progress through the years. Interesting to note, however, is that the Salt River Project Water, while it did grow somewhat, did not grow nearly to the extent that the Central Arizona Project Water did. And that's primarily due to the fact that the Salt River Project Water is dedicated to a very specific geographic area and cannot be used off-project, as we say. And of course, you can see this large green area that has grown tremendously, and that is the recovered well water. That's the recovery of the water that we store over time. And direct delivery of reclaimed water has increased somewhat as well. So, this slide kind of gives you an idea of how the water resource components compare now and how they will grow over time. You see a number of shaded areas there before you. The bottom layer is the Salt River Project Water, and you can see that it, for the most part, it remains constant over time, as does the CAP water and the groundwater component itself. But what builds over time is this purple area, and that's the recharged water or the stored water. And, you know, that is the part that we will continue to use and will have a more important role, especially in terms of the drought contingency planning. We bank that water and, you know, have plans to use it. It is also a component of, you know, of our contingency planning. But what this shows is that Peoria does have sufficient water through build-out, and that our portfolio is very diverse. We have a requirement, and that requirement is called the Assured Water Supply. In order to facilitate and allow for growth, the city has to demonstrate that it has an assured water supply that will carry it out into the future, in fact, for 100 years. And in order to do that, we have to prove up to the Department of Water Resources that the water is physically available, that it is continuously available, and that it is legally available. All of these have very specific meanings, and all are different. Physically available means that water is real water, that it can be accessed, and that it can be delivered, and it must be, you know, delivered and available 24/7. It's got to be continuously available. Legally available is the proving up of the rights to those allocations, and we've met all three of these obligations, and consequently, do have an assured water supply for 100 years. Another key planning document that furthers our goal of sound planning and management is the Principles of Sound Water Management, which is a document that comprises various policies that are all water-related, and collectively, those help guide us into the future to ensure that we have adequate water resources through build-out. We have a roadmap for the future, and that roadmap provides for redundant sources of water to meet citizens' needs and allow for economic growth. The, you know, the surface water in fixed amounts will remain the basis for the bulk of our water supply. Stored water is our drought supply and will augment surface water. Recharge of surface water and reclaimed water from our water reclamation facilities are critical to Peoria's overall water supply, and as we continue to preach every day, water conservation is one of the best ways to extend and maximize our water resources, and we do that through education outreach and other methods as well. In terms of drought mitigation, drought is foremost on many people's minds these days. We hear about it constantly in the media, especially coming out of California. And we, you know, we plan for drought, and we are mindful of the value of our water resource. We differentiate ourselves between what is going on here and California in that, in three ways, essentially. Arizona has infrastructure primarily in regards to reservoir storage. We also store water underground in considerable amounts, and that water will carry us through any future drought. And we have a mindset or culture where we're based in a desert environment, and we have ingrained the idea of conservation to a large extent. So, we've talked about drought, but what is it? Drought's an abnormally dry period over geographic region or area. We've been in a drought for several years. What drought isn't, it isn't necessarily a water shortage. Municipal providers have priority for cap water and would experience any kind of a curtailment on the system much later than, say, other entities like the agricultural community. The key goals of our drought management and contingency planning, simply, we want to protect public health and safety. We want to provide sufficient water to meet the needs of our customers, and we want to minimize disruption to the economy and to protect jobs and preserve regional economic stability. Now, to that end, the City Council approved a drought contingency ordinance in 2007, and it demonstrates our further planning over time for drought and general water awareness. The city's drought management plan provides procedures and strategies for a declared deficiency condition. The goal is to have enough stored water such that we can provide all the water necessary to carry Peoria through a period of six years of extreme drought and curtailment of our surface water supplies. Why six years? Well, six years comes from the, a study that was done by the Salt River Project, which demonstrated that the, through a tree ring study, that the average drought event lasted about six years. And so that's the goal that we've established, and that's the goal that we have, to store a volume of water to carry us through six years of extreme drought. So, in summary, our policies and our planning and investment, all of which have been supported and developed through council, have positioned us very well to provide for growth and to manage a drought or a curtailment of our surface water supplies. The water policy guidance that council has provided, as well as allowing for the master planning effort itself, and supporting our efforts and investment in infrastructure, have all led us to this position where we're in good shape for the future. The next steps, as we see them, we will come back to council at a future meeting, and we will seek adoption by council of the master plan that you see before you. This master plan will guide future development and will be one of the primary drivers as we develop our CIP and present that to you in the coming years. So with that, I'll turn it over for any questions you may have.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Hunt?
Could you go back about two slides, two or three?
Whoa. What's the difference? We say we have a 100-year water supply, and yet here it says we have basically a six-year water supply. How would you explain that to the average, like me, out there who sees that and goes, "Wait, that's a big difference. What are you talking about?"
Okay. The 100-year assured water supply is a regulatory requirement that a municipality and private water provider must meet in order to demonstrate that it has the allocations in place to allow for a supply of water for those 100 years. That is the, that is, can be considered, you know, the paper water that could be physically available if needed. Now, what we are talking about, a six-year supply, has to do with drought, drought management and contingency planning. And that six-year supply is strictly one component that we're providing for in our overall water portfolio, and that is the underground storage. We recharge the effluent from our water reclamation facilities, as well as some raw CAP water, and that is a, you can look at that as a type of banking, you know, consider it your checking account. We're banking that water underground such that if there were an extreme drought, and if the Central Arizona Project or the Salt River Project were to declare a curtailment in those canal systems, and we had to reduce our surface water, we still had that water available underground, which we could withdraw using our wells.
So, to say that, maybe a little shorter, we have 100-year supply of water for our build-up population.
But it's paper water.
We have it in our water resources. We have it in our legal rights, which he's referring to as paper water. We will build the pipelines and treatment facilities over time to serve new development, but we have enough for 100 years, once we've done all of those things. The six-year is a short-term, six-years being a short-term. Six-year is an emergency situation where that would be the duration of a drought, and during that six-year period, we have stored enough water to keep us going for that six-year period, at which point, history has demonstrated that that drought would end, and we would go back to normal operations. So, it's a 100-year supply, but we also have a contingency where we could supply for six years during what I would call a water emergency or an extreme drought.
The requirement for 100 years does not require that you have drought storage. This is above and beyond the 100-year storage requirement.
What if the drought or some other awful thing happened 50 years from now? Do we have the water for it? Because we say we do, if we have 100-year supply of water. Where is that water?
That's apply-
Is it liquid wet water, or is it paper water?
It is liquid wet water, and that water is the variety of sources that we were talking about earlier. It's Central Arizona Project water from the Colorado-
But maybe they run out.
I'm sorry?
Maybe they run out. Maybe CAP and SRP run out, but Peoria says we have 100 years of water.
We have, we will have six years of stored water to deal with that emergency. So, we don't anticipate that that emergency would extend beyond the six years. That's what we're saying. After, we believe that the reason-
I'm going to let it go, because I'll never understand it, so just get somebody that's better water-wise than I. We either do, or we don't have 100 years of water, in my world.
May I? We have 100 years, we have to, for every home that we have in Peoria, or every number of residents that we have in Peoria, we have to guarantee that they have, that we can supply 100 years' worth of water to that residence. It's the 19-
But maybe we can't.
But we do. We do. We have to prove it. We have to have so many sources of water, and we are going well over and above those required sources of water because we want to store water in case of an emergency. Now, that emergency is different than the 100-year supply. That emergency is if- And if they say that, then we have an emergency. Now we've got, now we reach into the water that we've been cleverly saving for all these years.
Another way to look at this is, we refer to as surface water as a renewable supply, meaning that it's renewable in that every year you get a snowpack, and that ultimately melts and comes in the form of water on the Colorado River, or alternatively, in a separate watershed, snowpack in Arizona, which is the Salt River Project. So you have two different supplies, different circumstances on each. The third is the groundwater, groundwater that is here in Peoria available to us and supplemented by the water that we, year after year, store, so that we can bring that water to us. So these are renewable supplies, meaning that year after year, those supplies are available to us. And again, the circumstance that we're trying to insure ourselves against would be a period of time when it could be any of the things that you described, a disruption of the Central Arizona Project Canal, a disruption temporarily of the SRP system, or a drought that would reduce those supplies. And as Mike alluded to earlier, cities have priority of water in the Central Arizona Project over and above other users, meaning agriculture farms. The cities have priority. And the circumstances would have to be extreme before those cities would be curtailed.
Council, any other questions, discussion?
I just have one thing I would like to say. This is a really tremendous document. It's a great master plan. I appreciate that you've gone the route of integrating all of the different sources and resources and, you know, everything into one master plan now. I want the citizens of the City of Peoria to know that this is a really great comprehensive plan, and it assures that our water supply is safe for the long term, that we have planned not only for today and tomorrow, not only for the drought that we're in now, but for an emergency drought, for growth all the way to the build-out of our city, our entire population. And so they can rest easy knowing that we are not only taking care of the plan, but we are putting and making sure that all of our conservation efforts are in place and also planned for, so that we continue, even as we grow, to use, you know, less water per capita than we have in the past. So it's a way for our citizens to feel safe and assured, and I thoroughly appreciate that. That's what we're in business of doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to that point, later on in your action agenda tonight, there's an agreement for us to get more water going forward, even before we need it, to make sure that we have enough for that 100-year assured supply for future growth in the city. So, well said. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are adjourned.